Hey, everyone. I'm Melissa Shakata, host of Melissa in the Morning on WACC 600 AM 95.9 FM. I also happen to be a Milford resident and I have a son in the Milford Public Schools. So I talk a lot on my show about the importance of local elections. These are the people that matter. They're the ones who are speaking on your behalf for your children, your families, your school districts, your teachers. And so we thought it was important to make sure that you know some of the faces of those who are going to be on the ballot this upcoming election. I want to say I'm very proud to partner with the Milford PTA Council for these Board of Education candidate conversations. I also do want to add, we invited everybody for every district that we are covering with these videos. So today, we are covering right now District Four. We did invite all candidates who are running in District Four, and it was really up to the candidates if they wanted to participate in today's conversation. And so we just wanted to make sure that you knew everybody was invited to this, and whoever wanted to show up and get to know you a little bit better, that is who you are seeing today. So joining me now, Cindy Wolf Boynton is here.
Hello.
I also want to introduce Tom Kova, who is also here. And I'm flipping my pens, I'm getting very excited to talk all about District Four. And Cindy, I'm going to start with you and just talk about, I know you are no stranger to the Board of Ed. Talk a little bit about, you know, who you are and just reintroduce yourself to those who are watching.
Well, thank you, Melissa. So happy to be here. My name is Cindy Wolf Boynton, and I am a lifelong Milford resident. I am a graduate of the Milford Public Schools. I went to Meadowside School, which actually I can still sing my eighth grade alma mater, which I won't do for you right now. I then went to Milford High for two years until it closed, and then I went over to Jonathan Law. Both my sons went through the Milford School System, though I did have one that decided to go over to Platte Tech. And I've been on the Board of Education for three years now, or I'm sorry, three terms now. And I consider it a real privilege. I'm a communications person. I worked in higher ed for a lot of years. I was a college professor. And actually, it was my experience as a college professor that really made me decide to get involved in education and to run for the Board of Education because I was teaching at Houstonic Community College. And it was fascinating to me to see the different levels that students were coming into my English 101 class with the different levels of ability to be able to write and to communicate clearly. And I could started to see a pattern after a couple of years of what towns they were coming out of. And though I was always really happy with the education that was being delivered to my children and my friends' children here in town, I really wanted to see, you know, what was going on and get more involved and make sure that when our kids were graduating, that they were going on and as best prepared as they could be to be successful, no matter what they were doing.
All right. Well, Cindy, we appreciate the intro. And Tom, I want to also learn a little bit more about you, reintroduce yourself also to our viewers this evening.
Hi, I'm Tom Kova. I'm just finished my first term in the Board of Ed since 2023. I was not a resident or a born and raised in Milford person. I was actually from Middletown, and I lived in Middletown, Windsor, New Haven. I've been down here in Milford for five years now. My wife and I moved down here during the middle of COVID because I wanted to be closer to the beach, and it's worked out well. My background, I've been an engineer for 40 some odd years. Budgeting schedules, I manage development programs. So I manage people, I manage budgets, I manage schedules, I talk to customers. It's a very encompassing job. And I just enjoy, you know, I enjoy managing, especially dealing with people. Over the years, I did a lot of, call it volunteer work at the college level, like Cindy was saying, she was involved in college. A group of us formed an alumni advisory board at the University of Hartford back in the early 90s. And we were instrumental in putting in a master's program there for the first time in history in that school. And since then, I serve on a STEM advisory board for Connecticut Community Colleges, the Middlesex Branch. Our big job there is curriculum alignment between the community colleges to guarantee seamless entry into the UConn's and the Southerns, where we do a lot of curriculum recommendations and audits. And I've also worked a lot in the college student area, helping them with mock interviews. And lately, working with UConn Engineering sponsoring and mentoring senior design programs, which is very rewarding. All that, you know, all that and my desire to serve the community kind of aligned me with wanting to be on the Board of Ed. And I have to say that the two years I've been on the Board of Ed, I've learned a lot. The community involvement has been fantastic, and it's been a ton of work, but incredibly rewarding.
You know, Tom, you mentioned managing. It's a big thing. You love managing, you love, you know, that aspect. How has that really helped you in serving on the Board of Ed previously?
You know, a lot of the work is, budgeting is our biggest thing. You know, that's our major job at the beginning of the year and going through. And, you know, we spend hours and hours and hours going through many hundred line items that are presented to us by the superintendent and her staff. And that comes second nature to me, looking at money and trying to evaluate things. And here in light of what's needed for educational process. But it's also a people job, being a manager, and collaborating with people and getting buy-in from people and getting, you know, from both customers, suppliers, peers, manufacturing. So that fits well in with all the items we're doing here, involves a lot of community environment, knowing how to listen to people. And I think a good manager is a good listener. And I try to, I'm not as great as I'd like to be, but I think that's a key aspect of our operations in the Board of Ed.
Thank you, Tom. Now, Cindy, I want to talk about something that Tom just touched on, which was the budget. Now, you've served three terms with the Board of Ed, so you are no stranger to knowing that we've had a couple of really rough budget cycles in Milford.
We have.
In your professional opinion, what has been the disconnect? Why has it been such a continuous issue in Milford?
Well, that's a really good question, Melissa. And I'm not sure that I can answer that exactly, why the disconnect. What I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt is that, you know, we worked really hard to do our job here to, as a board, to make sure that we were putting forth the most responsible, physically responsible budget that we could. And one of the things that I think is really important about the budgeting process here is that this administration doesn't start with last year's budget and saying, let me build on that. Instead, every single school year, it starts with zero. And then they begin to put the budget together. What do we want and what do we need? And it's no news to anyone that prices everywhere are going up. And we have contracts that were negotiated previously that we have to meet. And also, our number one expense is human capital. And so we have done, I think, a really great job partnering with the administration to put out budgets that ensured that our students were going to get what they needed. And unfortunately, they were higher than what our Board of Aldermen felt comfortable moving forward. And it was a little bit, or it was very, actually, disconcerting that there, for the past two, three cycles, that there has been so much debate over it. Because I can't imagine many things that are more important than the future of our community. And that's what our students are. They're the future of our city of Milford, of our state of Connecticut, and, you know, our nation. I'm not going to get all philosophical and prosaic over it. But, you know, just like all of our budgets have gone up at home because of electricity, because of contracted things, that's what happened in our school system as well. It's just everything is expensive. And I think one of the other very difficult realities is that we have very old buildings. I believe our newest building here in Milford is about 50 years old. And it takes a lot of money to keep those buildings up to par and to be warm when they're supposed to be, cooler when they're supposed to be, and not falling down around our students. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of talk among leaders of our city about how education is the priority, but unfortunately, you know, the actions don't go along with the words all of the time. And that's very discouraging.
So, you know, you bring up the school buildings, and we know right now, and certainly, you know, open to full discussion on this, the long-range facilities plan is underway. Nothing will probably happen in a concrete way, you know, shovels in the ground, anything like that, for a few years at least, is my understanding from Dr.
Try like a decade.
Correct. I was trying to be like nice and hopeful there. And I know Dr. Anna Kutaia has been on my show many times to say the same thing. But, you know, with that being said, we're in the very early stages. But, I mean, one of the things that I think can feel like sticker shock to a lot of families is when you hear plans of, you know, taking two high schools, making it one, taking three middle schools, making it two, taking eight elementary schools and narrowing those down. It does sound like, if cost continues to be an issue and you're trying to make archaic buildings, if you will, function appropriately, it does sound like you would be open in this long-range facility plan to, I don't want to say condense, but to go that route of less buildings, but also being able to advance them. I don't want to put words in mouths, but what do we, what do we think about what is currently being discussed with the long range?
Well, you know, when you're planning a vacation, right? When you, when you start planning your vacation, you put on paper your ideal situation, right? And then you start figuring out the logistics. Can I get from point A to point B in the amount of time that I have? Can I even afford to get from point A if I want to also include C and D? And then coming up with your final vacation plan turns out to be a version, perhaps, of what you started with, but maybe not the exact plan. That may not be the best metaphor, but it is kind of representative about what we've been doing. And Tom certainly can expand on this as well, is, you know, to figure out how to best provide the best facilities for our students in the most cost-effective manner, we had to start moving in a certain direction. So you have to have a plan, a tentative plan. What we've done so far is through a two-year process, we have talked with experts, we have talked with the community, we have looked at the numbers of students that we have, as well as future predictions, the conditions of the buildings, right? We've looked at every element that you can imagine and decide, okay, potentially, this could be a good plan. And now we just recently contracted with a company that's going to take all of our data, and they are the experts in coming up with a master plan, and they're going to say, okay, according to, you know, based on the land and the other environmental factors that you have, and your program needs, and the demographics.
Does this plan make sense?
You know, what is going to make, you know, or is something else going to be a better plan? And we're going to hear what they have to say. They're the experts. They've taken all the research we've done over the past two years, and they're going to come up with what they believe that we can actually do. And you know what? We're going to like it, and we're going to move on it. Or we're going to say, you know what? That really doesn't work for us, and here's why. So it really is a very long-term, a long-term thing. And it's, you know, it's kind of humbling, I think, to think about that, that we're working on something that really is for the next generation. And, you know, Tom certainly can add to that.
Yeah, what are your thoughts on that, Tom? Well, I think, you know, Cindy said a lot already. You know, we did come up with a configuration that we thought would work best. And consolidation gives you many things and a lot of, you know, we are not, we're not making class sizes larger, we're sticking to our class size guidelines. And it makes, having a school with, you know, let's look at middle schools. With three middle schools, advanced programs that we're trying to offer, like foreign languages, you may not have a population at a given school to even program that class because you only have 11 students signed up. If you have 11 here and 11 there, and those were in one school, you'd have enough. So it lets you consolidate programming, it gives you lower, call it administrative and maintenance costs. And in the big picture, you know, we had Bureau Veritas is an auditing evaluation company. It does a lot of industrial work all around the world on facilities, be it manufacturing, be it education, they look at processes. They have, they did a physical evaluation of all our schools. And if you look at what they came up with, and the numbers, it's not exact, but based on underestimation techniques, it's probably pretty close. If we do nothing to our schools, we're going to accrue a half a billion dollars in costs over 20 years. And we're going to be left with buildings that are, you know, 95 to 90, you know, to 100 years old. You know, our newest building is, like Cindy said, is actually 52 years old, and our oldest one is 75, which is Pumpkin Delight. We just did a refurbishment on Pumpkin Delight, and it looks beautiful because the aesthetics of all our buildings are kept in phenomenal shape by Pat Bradbury, who is our facilities director, and his staff. People walk through the building and say, wow, they're beautiful. The infrastructure is a different story. Early in the week, or early in the school year this year, a pipe burst in that building. It's still a 70-year-old building, you know? And, you know, so I think we settled on what we thought was a good configuration. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of community conversations involved. I think we're going to try to do a better job presenting data in a concise matter to the community. We pointed to websites where all this data was. We owe them summaries so we can, it's easily digestible, and somebody doesn't have to read a 60-page report. We're definitely moving in that direction. The firm that we hired to do the next step is really good at that. They're going to have an interactive website and things of that nature. That's going to be really helpful. And, yeah, you know, we've been looking at the recent evaluations of the school systems that came out. I looked at the high schools, you know, our, you know, just in general, out of the 206 high schools, we ranked 35 and 40, which is really good. But I looked at the top 10, and if I look at Staples and Westport consistently at the top of the list, Greenwich at the top of the list all the time. I bring out those two examples because those are towns that have no lack of money, right? They've chosen single high schools that are very large, and they're consistently performing well because they didn't do it to save money, they did it because it was a good configuration. So I think that that just gives us a little bit of background to see what other cities have done. And the niche website, who anybody, if anybody can just go on and look at it, does a really good rating of schools and systems, and doesn't just go by test scores, they look at the community, diversity, you know, the quality of the teachers and everything like that. And we rate fairly highly in all aspects, and particularly in, you know, being a good place to work. We need to maintain that. And we have to bring our buildings up to speed to be able to handle the classroom of the next generation, to make sure it can handle wireless and handle all the electronic things and handle curriculum that, we don't even know what the jobs are yet, that they're going to be available in 25 years.
Right, emergence of AI.
It's a big job, I think it's, you know.
It is. But I will say, it does sound like, you know, parents and residents in Milford do feel like you guys have made it, the Board of Ed currently has made it where you want to hear. I know that the emails come through, I certainly get them, where we are constantly told when the next meetings are, how to collaborate, how to be part of it.
And that's one of the rewarding things I've noticed, the community really cares about education in Milford. We have these events, we've had events on, you know, on Saturday mornings when it's snowing at Jonathan Law, and we had, we filled up a cafeteria. That really shows the involvement of the community in Milford.
You know, to that point, Tom, I'd love to ask you as well, Cindy. What do you feel are the biggest priorities for you when it comes to students in Milford? If you're on the Board of Ed, elected back to the Board of Ed, what would you say are the priorities you'd want to focus on?
I think it's really continuing on the trajectory that the system is already on. We've got, you know, we have, we have, we have our policies and procedures and just operating, you know, our operating, operating system where, you know, we have, we have a model for high-quality education, we have high-quality instruction, we have our vision of the learner, how we want to broaden students' abilities as well as their, you know, even their citizenship. We make sure we have equity in all manners across the system. And that all comes together, and we also need to make sure that we continue advancing our programming to meet the needs of the future. And that's, that's in both career, that's in, you know, career development. As, you know, so we are offering, we need to continue offering the certification programs where right now, students can graduate high school with a nursing certificate, or they can go into a trade, or they can go to college. We have to continue making sure we do that and continue advancing and try to keep up with technology. And that involves the people side of it with our instructional processes and our curriculum, advanced programming. We have to continue professional development. We have to, you know, we have to continue, you know, fully, you know, funding special ed and that sort of thing. And it's just a matter of, you know, budgeting is going to be tough, but our job is going to be to make sure that we fulfill all their needs. And we don't take a step back, we continue progressing forward because we've, we've caught up finally to the pre-COVID numbers and test scores and things, and we need to keep moving forward again.
Cindy, what do you think? What would you say are priorities?
So the first, I think the one thing that is really important for people to understand is that the Board of Education, one thing that we don't do is that we're not involved in day-to-day decisions, right? Our job is to hire the best superintendent possible, who is going to lead our schools in the direction that we believe they should go in, and we work on policies and procedures. So what are my priorities? So my priorities are similar to what Tom said, is to keep the school district moving forward. One of the things that I have really enjoyed watching over the six years I have been on the Board so far is seeing how we, as a district, have moved away from that really old-fashioned idea that every high school graduate has to go on to college, and that somehow that they're not successful if they don't go on to a four-year university. And so as a board, we help Dr. Kutaia and leadership set goals and objectives for not just the next school year, but for the next several school years. And one of the things that we have been focused on, and I'll put it in my own language, is empowerment. I think that empowering other people to find their gifts and their talents and to make them feel that they can go out into the world and they can pursue whatever they were uniquely meant to do is not just how you make strong people, but how you make strong communities. And I really feel that the direction that we have been going in, as Tom mentioned, through the establishment of practical training programs in addition to preparation for college, is one of the best things that we can do. And I think that we have currently in place an outstanding leadership team that is extremely progressive. And when I say progressive, I'm not talking about progressive politically, I'm talking about progressive as in visionary, that they really have the experience and the expertise to know not just that our students need to be taught to be their best selves, but also that our faculty needs to be taught and empowered to be their best selves as well, right? If you want great students, you have to have great teachers. And so that's a path that I would really like to see us continue on. I think that we will. But the, yeah, that idea of empowerment, I think, is really key.
Only because I know that I'm going to get the cue soon to wrap up, I would love to give you both a final, like a leaving thought for those who are going to the polls, whether it's on November 4th or they're going to start early voting October 20th. What would you want voters to think about when it comes to why you? Why would you stand out as a Board of Ed member? I'll start with you, Cindy.
Oh, thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. I'm thinking about this. You know, I, time is really important to me. I am at a stage in my life where I probably have less time ahead of me than I have, right? I have less time ahead of me, I've had more time behind me. So how I spend my time is really important to me. I try to spend it on things that I'm committed to, on things that I feel that I have a knowledge base and some expertise that will help me move things forward. I really believe that one of the best things any of us can do is try to leave the world in a little bit of a better place than where we started from. And part of the reason that I continue to strive to be on the Board of Education is because I really believe that my background as a journalist, which I was for several decades before I got into education, then as an education consultant with the NEAG School of Education at UConn, and then working in higher ed with not just students who were privileged to be able to go to Yale, because the Yale School of Medicine was one of the places that I taught, but also the students at the community college, who, you know, many of them were starting college for the first time after their kids went off to college. And I have seen how important not just education is, but a really good education. And perhaps even more important, to instill that desire to be a lifelong learner, because that's how you deal with the unexpected challenges. And that's how you learn how to think critically and to be able to deal with the problems that, like Tom mentioned before, we're not even going to know what those problems are going to be in a couple of years because technology and our world is just moving so quickly. So I think that, you know, I bring a lot of unique abilities and experience, and I really care. I really enjoy talking to all the people in my district, to helping as much as I can. And as I said before, you know, I think empowering people through education is just of the utmost important, and to be involved in it is a privilege.
Thanks, Cindy. I appreciate that. And Tom, what would you like to leave?
It's going to be a tough fall.
You guys have been great.
I think, you know, when I, when I first went into this endeavor back in 2023, I think I had the same thoughts that I had then, except now, after a couple of years of experience, I know, I know how the process works, and I've gotten, I know how the Board of Ed works. There was a lot of learning, and I'm beyond that. So now I feel really comfortable at it. But I think, you know, education is the cornerstone of a good democracy and a good, and a good community. And we're preparing, you know, children for the future, and I find that incredibly rewarding. And I think it's important that we continue our commitment to our school systems. And I think a lot of the, a lot of the experiences that I've had in my, in my job have helped me in a lot of areas. And I think that all of us on the Board of Ed bring I think that all of us on the Board of Ed bring a slightly different skill set with a lot of knowledge, that cohesively we work together, and that is a very enjoyable environment. We, you know, there may be, you know, numbers things, there may be, you know, you know, other things. I've had, you know, I've even had experience in my job in, in facilities, updates and management, where I've managed building refurbishments. So a lot of the stuff I bring to the table helps in a lot of different areas. And in general, I just, and my work on advisory boards in the past, I've been able to directly use that as we've done, you know, as we're seeing curriculum presentations and things of that nature. And I think that, you know, Dr. Katia and her staff are, you know, provide us with a, a lot of good, you know, information to set our priorities, and, and it's, it's up to us to execute them. So I just feel also that, you know, this is my opportunity at this stage in my life, because I even have less time than Cindy has probably, to, you know,
Let's hope not.
To, to give back to a community that, and, and, and it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, but it's incredibly rewarding. And I enjoy giving back to the community, and I enjoy the community involvement, and I like the back and forth with the community, and want to keep Milford a, you know, a, a great place to live and, and for, for people to excel.
Tom Kova and Cindy Wolfpoint, and I want to thank you both so much for just doing this open forum and being able to connect a little bit more before people head to the polls or send their absentee ballots. And so thank you both so much. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
You're very welcome. And I want to thank you for watching. Again, early voting is going to start October 20th, but of course, you can head to the polls on Election Day, November 4th. And again, we want to make sure that people show up. These are the elections that matter, your local elections. These are the people who are making decisions about your kids, your schools, your families. And it's important that you know who is on the ballot for this upcoming election. Again, this is for District Four. And please be sure to use this link and share this video with any friends, families, anybody in the district, and make sure you do get out and vote. Thank you so much for joining us.